Good evening and welcome to the May 11th regular meeting of the Town Council.
Encourage me.
You would kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nancy is excused this evening, she has other business to attend to, and so it's my one time of year that I'll have to do this. First on announcements, we have the town office will be closed Monday, May 29th for observance of Memorial Day. On Thursday, May 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Carriage Shed, which is at Buckley's Great Stakes, located 438 DW Highway, the council will be having our annual retreat and work session. June 8th and June 22nd, both at 7:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room, are regular meetings of the council. Paul, did you have anything?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Police Department's open house is scheduled for Saturday, May 13th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. Plenty of displays to see, events for the kids, take a tour of our department, and meet our officers and staff. Also on Saturday, the Parks and Rec Department and the Friends of Merrimack Dog Park cordially invite everyone to join them in the grand opening at 11 o'clock of the new dog park at Wassman Park with a ribbon cutting ceremony. This event was originally scheduled last Saturday, but ended up being postponed due to the rain. Please join them in coming out for their official opening. So it's going to be a busy day between the Police Department and the dog park being open. Transfer stations extended hours began today, May 11th. The transfer station remains open on Thursday nights until 7:00 p.m. and will run from today through September 7th. Thank you.
Excellent. Next, any PFO updates? There are not any comments from the press and public, if you would like to address the council, please step right up here and state your name and address, please.
Address or association?
Association.
Okay, Derek Edry, Nashua Telegraph. I'm here in front of you folks tonight because last Monday, last Tuesday, I learned that there had been a change of policy in town related to communications with public officials. I attempted to reach out to Matt Casparius of Parks and Recreation, and his assistant informed me that I now have to go through the town manager. I reached out to Eileen Cavanaugh, the town manager, and I asked her, basically, how that change came about. She, and I do have the emails in hand, but she essentially told me that it's in the town charter that she can enforce that. I asked her where in the town charter that is, but she did not clarify where. My, I'm coming in front of the board because I believe that if she is going to enforce that, and it's not in the town charter, she would have to go through the town council in order to do it, it would have to be established as a policy. I believe that is the case. If it is in the town charter, if it could be provided to me where in the town charter that is. Otherwise, I just am a little bit concerned about how our communications have changed. She sent an email to my executive editor who, or my executive editor emailed her, excuse me, regarding the emails she had sent to me. One of those emails, she said, in one of those emails, she said, "BTW, not a good way to start," in reference to me asking her to tell me where the town policy is that she was enforcing. My executive editor followed up with her about what she meant. She referenced two occasions, one occasion in which I reached out to Matt Casparius regarding the El Guerra Drive property being leveled. He informed me by phone that they were looking into new locations for the skate park, ice rink, and other facilities. I reported that, I reported that they were looking into that. She, in this email, says that I had said that the town had picked out places for the skate park and basketball courts and skating rink. That's not true, I never, I never reported that, I just said they were looking into it. She also references in this email that I had contacted her two weeks ago about potentially obtaining her performance evaluation, because it was going to be discussed at last town council meeting. She denied that to me, which she may have the right to do, but in the email, she says that I was, I implied that I was digging up dirt on her, which frankly, that's not what I was doing, doing my job. So, anyway, my point to summarize is that if she is going to be enforcing this, I ask that A, she provide where in the town charter it says that she can do that, B, if you want to go that route, we can establish a policy through the town council, or C, we can have a discussion. That's all I ask, thank you.
Thank you. I think in the charter, that there are rights and responsibilities of the manager, and I'm thinking, I don't know if this is the case, but I'm suspecting that that's where she came up with that. She has that right to do with her employees as she sees appropriate and fit for her job and there. So, I'm not sure why, you know, what she might have been talking about, but that, that's what I'm thinking, is, you know, the performance evaluation, I thought that, you know, was out of bounds personally, but I'm not a legal guy, but then, but I would suggest you continue the conversation with her if you could, and you might get your better answers that way, directly from her. Bill?
You can refer, Mr. Edry, to the fact that the town charter is available online at merrimacknh.gov.
Thank you, Bill. Is there any further comment from the public or press?
Evening, Gage Perry, Merrimack Conservation Commission. Just a quick announcement, I didn't realize Nancy wasn't going to be here tonight, and I sent this to her, so I apologize for not including the rest of you. Just a quick notice, this Saturday is the 17th Annual Seedling Giveaway at Courier Orchards. It's going to be from 9:00 to noon, it's open to all Merrimack residents, and just check out the website, merrimackoutdoors.org for more information.
So get your seedlings, go to the Police Department, and then go to Wassman Park for the dog park, in that order.
Again? Do not pass go, do not collect $200. Very good. Thanks, Gage. All right, if there's nothing further, next on the agenda is recognition of Master Patrolman John Dudasch, who was recognized by his staff and peers as the VFW Police Officer of the Year. So Chief, if you could come up here and, John?
Thank you, Vice Chair Rothausen, members of the council, good evening, members of the public, and guests, and fellow members of the Police Department, thanks for coming in tonight. It's no surprise that our employees are really amazing people, but every once in a while, somebody goes above and beyond, should really step over here for photographs. Every once in a while, one of our employees goes and above and beyond the call of duty, and that's one of the cases here tonight, when I want to talk about in just a moment about what John did last March. He was, as a result of those actions, recognized by VFW Post 8641, right here in Merrimack, after nominations by his colleagues and by his staff for being the Police Officer of the Year. It was back on March 26th, at about 10:30 in the morning, our communications center received a call from a gravely concerned woman who felt her brother was distraught and may harm himself. The only information that she could give the dispatcher at the time was that the brother had left a statement on his Facebook page, and it said, "Call 911, so sorry I lost my struggle, come get my dog." John was dispatched, and while en route, he ran a motor vehicle search in all of the individual's vehicles, and when he arrived at the house, he only saw one of the registered vehicles in the driveway. When he approached to investigate, he heard what sounded like a motorcycle engine ripping very fast from inside the garage. He immediately tried the garage doors, but they were all locked. Immediately radioed communications center to have emergency personnel, ambulance and rescue respond to the home as well. Officer Dudasch then tried to kick the door open numerous times, and was able to finally get open just a few inches, as he found out in short order that it was barricaded by a motorcycle leaning up against the side of the, inside of the door itself. When he peeked in, he saw an unresponsive subject slumped over and a motorcycle running and blocking the doorway. John, armed only with his brute strength, literally, pulled the door from its hinges, ran into the exhaust and carbon monoxide-filled garage, and then grabbed the patient's by his pants and physically carried him outside into the fresh air. He became more responsive as John attended to him, and was immediately attended to by the paramedics upon their arrival. He was later airlifted to Dartmouth Hitchcock Medical Center in Lebanon, New Hampshire, where he recovered fully. Officer Dudasch, at that point in time, was put in a life or death situation that came with many unknowns. From the beginning, he started to narrow down the variables as responding to the residents. Upon arriving at the scene, he had enough information to know the male subject was depressed, and also saw that one of the cars was missing. Officer Dudasch, once out of his cruiser, was able to determine quickly that it was a suicide attempt that was happening inside the garage. He immediately called other emergency personnel, and with pure physical strength, was able to get the door from the hinges and made entry. And once inside, he found that male subject unconscious with a motorcycle and other gas-powered apparatus running. With total disregard for his own safety, he entered the carbon monoxide-filled garage and carried him, the patient, to safety. There is no doubt that Officer Dudasch saved a life that day, his quick thinking and his immediate selfless action that he took gave the patient another chance at life, and it's because of that heroic action that we recommended him and nominated him to the VFW, and that he was recognized as our Police Officer of the Year. We're very proud of John, and congratulations. There's one interesting side note, that when we came to the agreement and the understanding that what it was that John did was very heroic, and that it would be only natural for him to be nominated, I wanted to make sure I gave him the information and told him in person, so I met him out on the street in his sector, and pulled up next to him, and I said, "John, you know, this is a great day for you, you've been nominated as our Police Officer of the Year," and he was stunned. And the only thing he could say was, "Do you think maybe you could find somebody else?" John's not the type of person that relishes in this kind of attention, he's not the type of person that steps up in front of the limelight, but he's the type of person that can be relied upon for when the things, when things get down, and you need somebody to be there to help you out, John's the type of person. And when I told him tonight that he actually has to speak, he was mortified. So I'm going to turn the mic over to John for just a moment.
I am mortified. I just want to thank everybody, I appreciate that applause, that was very nice, just doing my job that day, and do it again. It was, to me, it was just an act of doing the job, and that's what we get hired for. Thank you.
Excellent. What's that, Paul? associated with the 2017 EverSource Transmission Rights of Way Reliability Project. And I don't know if somebody is here tonight to make that presentation, oh, they are, okay. I thought you were.
No, no, I'm just plugging in my machine for later. Yeah, it's by me, yeah.
The submission was by you, so I guess that's... Good evening.
Good evening, members of the Town Council. My name is Elizabeth LaRocca, I know some of you, I'm a 36-year veteran with PSNH, now EverSource. I work in community relations, and I'm your contact. Work very frequently with Paul McCauley and Eileen Cavanaugh, your police and fire chiefs, and their wonderful officers and staff members. And we're here today to let you, ladies and gentlemen, know what we're going to be embarking upon in the town of Merrimack. A lot of it is routine maintenance, but we nonetheless thought we would let you know about the large amount of work we've been doing. We've been spending hundreds of millions of dollars every year for the last several years to make our electric grid more resilient, and we're hoping that you see the results of our work. We have gotten anecdotal evidence and comments from people, particularly our emergency responders, that indicate that it's, life is easier for them on the restoration side, as well as on the communication side. So without further ado, I will let the experts here talk to you tonight, and so who I've got here with me is Mike Stanek. Mike is a certified arborist for our transmission department, and that's the electric, that's the highway system, the electric system, as opposed to distribution was the local, the local system. And next to Mike is Sarah Hoodlett and Logan Young, and Sarah and Logan are in the, I'm going to have to refer to my card, in the Siding and Construction Services Department within transmission. And so they're the people, Sarah and Logan will be helping Mike talk to people in town as they go about their work. So at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Sarah, who will be assisted with Mike in the presentation.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Can you hear me okay? Okay, I thought I turned it off.
The light will be on.
There we go, got it. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. So the main focus of our agenda is going to be on what we're calling the Transmission Right-of-Way Reliability Program, we'll talk about that later. At first, we wanted to give you an overview of some of the other work going on in town, just to let you know about some other things, in addition to the TRRP, as we're calling it. So on Slide 2 here, you'll see an overview map of Merrimack, and it outlines the different rights of way in town, and what activities are going to be going on in the town of Merrimack in 2017. So you can use that as a reference as we progress through the presentation and going forward. Vegetation maintenance activities are usually on a cyclical schedule and include variety of things, like brush mowing, side mowing, and hazard tree removal. Mike does a lot of this work fairly regularly, and where Logan and I come in with that sometimes is meeting with landowners. Oftentimes, there are trees that are hazard, that might be off the easement, so it's on private property, and we have to work with property owners to let them know that it's a hazard, and work with them to get their approval to remove that tree. So that's where the vegetation maintenance activities really fall in to this work. General line maintenance is something where EverSource always evaluates the conditions of their infrastructure, and will upgrade or maintain lines and structures as necessary. This is generally performed to improve reliability of the lines, and could also include additional brush mowing, tree removal, or upgrading access roads, so the equipment can get to the areas that need to be maintained. And once the work is done, the area is restored. Storm hardening is very similar to that, it usually is an activity that is done to withstand certain severe weather events that we have. A structure could be modified, or it could be replaced entirely, depending on the condition of the structure and what needs to be done to make it reliable. Which brings us to Transmission Right-of-Way Reliability Program. Before I go on, do you have any questions about the other work that is going on in town?
You know, when I saw you guys were doing a presentation tonight, the one thing I've noticed, and it doesn't necessarily deal with the line hardening, but I've noticed that some work's been done, and most prominently, work was done a couple of years ago, clearing lines back, trees and stuff back by East Chamberlain Road on DW Highway, and there was a bunch of tree trunks left, sections of tree about 20 feet long, and I noticed in some areas where some work's been done, that there are, there are trees left on the sides there, and I'm not quite sure, should those be removed once they, once they've been taken down? Because those trees have been sitting there, they're unsightly, so I'm kind of, you know, wondering why they haven't been removed, it's been at least two years.
Yeah, you can bring that to Elizabeth's attention, and I can see to have those removed immediately. And a lot of times, when we leave wood on a right-of-way, it's, we have a dialogue with the property owner, and/or ascertain circumstances of, what does it take to remove a tree? Do we do more environmental damage to get a tree out than just leaving it there on the ground? Are there other repercussions or negative circumstances that we might accrue in removing those? Or is it just that a property owner, landowner, or abutter says, "I don't really care about them, and you can leave them there." We also adhere to New Hampshire slash laws, which prohibit us from leaving slash within certain parameters of property lines, major highways, and things of that nature, but generally, we're at the mercy of our abutters and your constituents for that matter, and if something's left, it's unsightly, help bring it to our attention, because what we manage is about 800 miles of transmission line, 25,000 acres, and we have little messes here, there, and the other place, and we're more than happy to oblige.
This, just this one, I mean, I drive by it every day, and it's right at East Chamberlain, between East Chamberlain and Columbia Circle. And it just, there's got to be 20 trees just laying there, and it's been there, kind of unsightly, if you guys could grab it, that'd be great.
Why don't you give me a week and a half to look into that?
Thank you.
It's funny, because I talked to Eileen about it, and she spoke to Kyle. Kyle, it's our Public Works Director, said that if it doesn't go, he normally makes contact, and you're very quick at getting it, so that's something that I think he was going to be doing anyhow.
Ms. LaRocca will provide you guys with my business card here, which will include my email address and cell phone number, and if it's not my resource that I maintain, I can certainly route it internally and make the thing right, whether it's that situation or others.
Yep, thank you very much.
Any others? Okay, so moving on to the Transmission Right-of-Way Reliability Program. This program is a separate program from other transmission work, in that it is an effort to maintain rights of way to the full easement width where applicable. So in May 2011 and 2012, three extreme weather events impacted transmission lines in New England, resulting in several vegetation-related outages across the region. These storms, in addition to several others, led to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, to do an audit in 2012, and one of the recommendations from that audit was to maintain the EverSource and other utilities' rights of way to the full width of the clearing. And on Slide 7 here, you'll see that there are...
Excuse me, Sarah?
Yeah?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Did you have a presentation you wanted shown to town or anything? Paul hooked up the laptops, I don't know.
That was for me.
Okay, I apologize, sorry, I just didn't want you...
No, that's okay, we can provide the presentation to you at later time if you'd like, we also have some extra copies if people from the public...
Right, thank you, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So on Slide 7 here, you'll see a diagram that outlines the amount of outages per those storm events, you'll see the several ice storms in the last few years, as well as the hurricane, or Storm Irene and Hurricane Sandy as well. So that just gives you an idea of the amount of outages we're looking at when a storm occurs in the region in New Hampshire. So why is this work needed? In addition to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, these trees can pose a hazard to obviously the infrastructure, as well as the customers that use the power, and people that live around them. So we want to make sure that everything is reliable and safe. On Slide 9, you'll see a typical scenario for rights of way in New Hampshire, as well as across EverSource territory. What you're looking at here is, you see a wire zone and a peripheral zone, and the work that we're doing, unlike other vegetation maintenance, which would be under the wire zone, the Transmission Right-of-Way Reliability Program is going to be done mostly in the peripheral zone, and that's where most of the clearing will be taking place for the work in Merrimack. But specifically for Merrimack, we're looking at a very small amount of work on these lines. So there's two lines that we have active right now, that will be starting in the next few weeks, and then a couple others that are going to be happening later on in the year. The W-157 is, and the 380 are both lines that run east to west throughout town, one is in the center, one is in the south center part of town, and you can see the numbers here. On the W-157, there are about 28 properties that have work on them, and on the 380, there are about 33 properties. Both lines in general have less than a half an acre, about a half an acre of work on them, so it's not, not a lot. We are working with the property owners to let them know this, and work will start in the next couple of weeks, and it should take two to three weeks to be completed in Merrimack. Sure.
Sorry, excuse me. Just for point of reference, the W-157, that power line runs through South Greater, Greater Road, Greater Property. The 380 runs through Horsehole Nature Preserve. So that's for logistics for people to realize. The 380's down by Anheuser-Busch, runs Anheuser-Busch cross, and the 157 runs through Greater, the Greater Road property that we own.
Great, thanks, Paul.
You said this work is being done still within your easement, right? So you're just clearing out to the edge of the easement?
Correct.
If there are trees that have been growing up in it, even though they're not underneath the wire drop area, you're still concerned and you want to get them out of there?
Yep, exactly, yep.
Okay.
In addition to the W-157 and the 380, there are a couple other lines in the northeastern corner of town, specifically the B-143, I don't expect you to remember any of these, but just other areas that you'll be seeing the work done later this year. As work progresses, and we have a more defined outline of what is actually going to be done, we'll relay that information to the town, probably via Paul, and if we need to come back and let you know what's going on with those, we can obviously follow up with you on that. So that's just a general overview for town of Merrimack. So the goal is to maintain the right of way safely, but it's also in our interest to keep the habitat intact as much as possible. So we work with landowners to educate them on the benefits of shrubs and other low trees that can grow in the right of way, that are compatible and don't impact the rights of way or the transmission lines. Mike is very good about working with us on that, and working with property owners, and letting everybody know that trees are not bad. Just need to make sure we can maintain them in a way that's safe for the transmission lines. We also work with landowners to explain to them that they can keep the wood if they want it, obviously it's their property, and it's their commodity if they wish to keep it. Usually, we'll leave wood on the rights of way, like we've already talked about, and landowners can keep it. There are other methods that we can talk about with landowners that usually we'll bring Mike in for, or we can talk with them about other things that they have questions about at the time. In terms of outreach and communication, we have an open door policy for that, we obviously like to let the towns know if the work is going on. We also work with landowners, businesses, other key stakeholders, such as conservation commissions, where it's applicable, to let them know about the work. Communication's ongoing, we meet with the towns, we send letters to landowners, we also have an open phone line, it's a hotline, Logan and I respond to that, we have an email address, again, Logan and I respond to that, and it's ongoing. We can get a call from someone tomorrow, we can get an email from them in two weeks, we can follow up with a phone call, or a site visit in a couple weeks. Whatever works for them is really what we're here for, in terms of what Logan and I do. Outreach will begin tomorrow, most likely, because we've had the meeting, so we'll get going on that as soon as we can, and like I said already, the work is probably going to take two to three weeks in town of Merrimack, probably starting later this week, or actually tomorrow, or Monday, because it's already Thursday night. So, so that's all I have for the presentation, the contact information is on Page 15, Elizabeth is obviously your community relations specialist, so if you ever have questions about general EverSource communications, you can obviously speak with her, you can also contact me, my contact information... You can also contact me, my contact information is there for you. For the public, we have the hotline and the email, like I said, and we'll respond to those as they come in. So that is all I have. Mike, can you do anything?
Um, I, I'd just like to say, every one of these right-aways in the town of Merrimack has been mowed recently. You guys have seen the John Brown and Sons Bronosaurus mowers. And that activity's probably more visually impactful than what we're about to endeavor upon, which is really just a housekeeping mission to steady the edges and, and kind of a, address five, maybe six feet worth of trees in some places at most. Um, you see more impactful things out of our Hazard Tree Program, where we're pursuing relationships with people and removing trees off right-of-way, which are hazardous to the lines. This is, uh, this program and how it impacts your town is very minimal. And, uh, we have an excellent team working with us, and we reach out to people, um, almost ad nauseam sometimes, to make sure that they know what's going on on their properties and explore all opportunities where, you know, you've accrued a negligent circumstance in one regard, uh, by seeing logs on the right-of-way. That's what this effort tries to spearhead and make sure that things are managed properly and we're not leaving cities and municipalities, neighborhoods, and individual property owners with circumstances that they just feel cornered and, and are unhappy with. So we open the avenue of communication, that's why we're here today, is to let you know that we are your resource and here to back you as your constituents approach you and, and, and want to know what's going on in their town. So you are as educated as, uh, we, we hope you can be in regard to these activities.
Very good. Your outreach actually has already begun, because my daughter lives on, what I didn't know was 1, uh, 157.
Okay.
And, uh, she had the door hanger already there about three or four days ago.
That was a unique circumstance where we wanted to get outreach there as soon as possible, so we did that. We had met with Paul already, so we hoped that that would be okay.
Sure. It was great, I'm sure.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, veg maintenance is ongoing, and a member of your daughter's community reached out because there's a sinkhole along the right-of-way.
It could've been my daughter then, because I, that sinkhole, I tried filling it up.
So that's, that's exactly right. Um, so, you know, that, that call came to me through veg maintenance, and I, I went out and looked at it and said, like, certainly, not only is that a negligible circumstance, you know, those trees can be undermined, but there's two pine trees behind it with woodpecker holes in it. And in an effort to consolidate activities, I made a judgment that those trees aren't gonna fall over tonight, but need to be addressed in the near future. So as to not enter that neighborhood multiple times over the next month here, I asked Sarah to kind of jump ahead into that neighborhood, make sure everyone's aware of what's going on, so we can dive in, take care of that circumstance, clean house around the rest of the neighborhood, and leave as to not become a, uh, a th, a three-time, you know, uh, event in the same neighborhood.
Yep, nope, perfect, perfect.
But you'll have to let us know personally how, uh, how we do out there. And, uh, there's a couple, there, there's a number of trees to remove, particularly on the downhill slope heading out into the wetland out there, where we'll be limited in terms of removal of logs in that scenario. Whereas in the maintained area up on the flat, like, we'll certainly pursue, like, a cleanly and, and full removal of all materials there.
Very nice, I appreciate that. That, that sinkhole was quite deep, actually.
Yeah, absolutely.
It, uh, but anyhow, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, what are the hours of operation gonna be, and what days are you going to be out conducting the work that you need to do?
Monday to Friday, and our crews generally start at about seven-thirty and work till about three o'clock. We don't, uh, do any work on Saturdays or Sundays. And when the fellas are in more of a residential area, they, they kind of push that start time back to about eight o'clock to oblige, you know, non, kind of like noisy activities. Whereas if they're out in the middle of a right-of-way in the forest, they try, they try to get going a little bit earlier.
What's the number of equipment or trucks that you're gonna be having out at a given location on a given day?
Um, this will probably be one or two crews, um, one crew per site. It'll be John Brown and Sons out of Ware, New Hampshire, who maintains these lines traditionally. It'll be rubber tire skitters, um, traditional chippers, and, uh, one-ton kind of chip trucks. And where circumstances call for it, a log truck. But very minimal, we're not talking about feller bunchers and, and forwarders and log clearing and, and like traditional logging operations. This is gonna look the same as any other maintenance activity that we've done on the right-of-way.
So, um, 380 and K-105 cross DW Highway along with, I believe, uh, B-143. Do you plan on using a sign or a police detail for any trucks that'll be on DW Highway?
Yeah, what we do there is we, uh, we put together, um, packages. We, uh, we, we basically comply with all highway and DOT standards in regards to that work. So we hire, uh, New England Traffic Control, and they produce a plan out there, and we coordinate with highways, and they, they ascertain and, and basically dictate to us when we can do work along the highways. You know, like, you're obviously not gonna do work in a southbound lane at seven AM on Monday. They, they steer us clear, where, you know, other areas, they ask us to do night work and things of that nature, and kind of guide us to, uh, the, the least impactful and, uh, best course of action.
Do you anticipate any night work?
No, sir.
The dovetailing off of Counselor Albert's question, Sarah had indicated that landowners have the opportunity to keep the woods that are cut down on their property. What if a landowner doesn't want the wood? Is ever-source or is John Brown gonna be removing, removing the logs from that particular location?
Uh, we will seek to remove it, it depends on the circumstance. So again, like, if we're in some maintained area, like a backyard with lawn and things of that nature, we will pursue full removal of the wood and/or grinding of the stumps and potential replacement. But then, depending on the nature of the tree, if it, it's like a planted tree or some sort of fixture ornamental tree that just doesn't belong, we'll go as far as to grind the stump, get the tree out of there, and provide a replacement. If the property is what we call traditional right-of-way, where it's off in the woods and, and back-a-ways, we pursue different avenues of, uh, wood disposal, where we could use a, a chipper or, and/or the Bronosaurus mower, and just basically process the wood on-site and turn it into wood chipmilk on the ground to decompose.
Along those lines, um, the W-157 and the 380 go through two important pieces of property owned by, not just the town of Merrimack, but the Conservation Commission, Horse Hill Nature Preserve, and, and Greater Woods. Have you done any cross-jurisdictional cooperation with community development or the Conservation Commission regarding the work that you're going to be doing in there? And have done site reviews with any of those departments regarding mitigation that needs to be done as it relates to some of the wetlands, especially at Horse Hill Nature Preserve?
Yes, sir, I'm familiar with both properties, and I can tell you first and foremost that the work is minimum in, in all of those sites. And, uh, what we've done to prepare for this project is we've had, uh, environmental scientists go out, and they've delineated wetlands which manifest themselves on project plans. So we have, um, best course of action procedures in place, um, as well as avoidance measures in place to preserve those. Um, to answer your first question, is Sarah and Logan will be reaching out to Gage in particular, as well as your town. You provide us with the resource, and we will go out and meticulously talk about every tree to be removed on your property, just like we would with a private property, you know. This is what we have to do, there's flagging in place that dictates the limit of clearing, and we can go out and talk individually about how to preserve your resources, how to manage the wood, and, you know, what are, what are the opportunities and what's the best thing to do for everybody that's in, you know, interested?
I appreciate the, uh, the vis, the visual aids and the, uh, the willingness to update the high-tension wires as it relates to storm rightiness. I still have days when I had, when I had family that lived up in Vermont, I, you know, the high-tension wires in Vermont and parts, go back, back in the ice storm of two thousand two, two thousand three, where they literally just, you know, they, they bent over like an erectuset. It was, um, it was a sight to be seen. I certainly can, can appreciate your willingness to get in there. But as, as somebody who lives on Joppa Road who has a transformer that lives across, that's right across the street, that, uh, in my twelve-plus years of living on Joppa Road, seemed to have failed at, at least twice a winter. Um, recently, ever-source's came out and actually replaced it, which, since I have you folks here, is there any type of strategic planning being done for the community of Merrimack regarding replacing existing transformers and providing upgrades so as to minimize, um, some of the equipment that's out there that may be impacted by, by a storm?
That's what, um, Counselor, that's what we meant by the, let me get the terminology. In our presentation on page one, um, line maintenance is where we'll go out and we will do things like, um, we notice a tran, a crossarm or a pole needs to be replaced. And, but the line looks fine. But the storm hardening is a comprehensive program, um, where we go out and we actually, um, it's a systematic upgrade of the line, bigger poles, bigger wire, bigger crossarms. We used to have to really stick with wood, because the, the, the preference would be to use steel for our poles. But that was much more expensive, but more recently, the cost of steel and wood has come in alignment. So we're now using steel. And, um, so we are very much aware and sensitive to the need to prepare for the crazy storms. Um, as I said, I've worked for the company for thirty-six years, and I thought we had big storms in the nineteen nineties. Um, and then, but two thousand eight, where we had three hundred and twenty, whatever it is on the chart, that's out of five hundred thousand customers. And-
Yeah.
And so, but to let you know how everything's been working out, people, um, have been very understanding about why we're doing what we're doing. Um, and they want us to come in, like you. Please help convince us that we've got a, a system that's gonna hold up for the, the kinds of conditions we're seeing. Um, to give you an idea of how well things are working out, um, I think it was two years ago, we spent five hundred million dollars on transmission and distribution. And then last year, it was three hundred and maybe fifty million. So huge sums of money, um, as being invested in the system to keep us rolling. And, um, the storms that we've had this year, we had one on, Paul will probably remember this, maybe it was March fourteenth, we had another one April Fool's Day. And I can't remember, I think I was going out to Keene on April Fool's Day, and that was heavy wet snow. We've had some pretty heavy wet snow conditions, but the amount of damage is minimal. Um, it's something like forty thousand customers without a power, and we got them back within a day. And part of that has to do with not only are we improving the, um, transmission distribution system lines and poles and wires and structures and crossarms, but we also have a system, uh, control center. We, for decades, we've had the ability, we have operators in Manchester, New Hampshire, that run the New Hampshire transmission grid, so for all the utilities. Now we have, starting about two years ago, we have twenty-four-hour operators monitoring the distribution system as well. So when we have a storm like we've had, and those two dates I mentioned, we've got eyes on the system, and they're directing what we call troubleshooters. So we're not having to wake up people in the middle of the night, linemen, and say, "Hey, would you please go out and patrol Wire Road"? We, you know, "We heard from the police that there's a, you know, a big mess out there." We actually see, because we've got automation on the system as well, so we know where it occurred, and we tell the troubleshooters to please go out and look at the situation, so we have that going on as well. Now, your question was, what are we doing specifically in Merrimack? So we, when we met with Paul and Kyle Fox, so we go, we had some details. I'll see if there's something that I can provide you, uh, folks that will answer that question more specifically. But I just wanted you to have a, a sense as to what we're doing lately, and, um, I think, I hope you're seeing some improvements with your-
The la, the last storm we had in, in either February or March, uh, ever-source said, excuse me, was out, I wanna say in late November, saw them literally putting up a, a new transformer. So I was like, okay, well, we'll see how this works, and, um, you know, things flickered, but nothing went out. So I was like, very cool, I was, I was impressed with that.
Yeah.
I think I'm kind of impressed with the, some of the state-of-the-art technology that you're using, that instead of relying on myself to pick up a phone and being in a, in a queue waiting for one of your customer service reps to pick up and take my information, the fact that you're, have technology that can at least pinpoint the, the general location of, of a particular outage, I think is going to, is a level of efficiency that will increase your response times, which I think will, you know, obviously is gonna benefit not just our community, but other communities that have ever-source. So I'm really enthralled by that technology, it's exciting to hear. You know, it's, I'm happy to hear you talking about stuff like that, which I, I think people will take notice of that, so I appreciate that. The, uh, the, I have two more questions, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. Um, the, um, Sarah uttered a dirty word, FERC. FERC's kind of a dirty word in this community. Um, I guess the, I guess the, uh, the, the question, the question would be, um, in this particular area, as it relates to, as it relates to upgrades, i, i, what, what, is FERC providing any type of regulatory oversight? Or is it just, is it, is it just part of, you notify FERC to let them, to let them know that you're, you're upgrading particular lines, like, there's no need for any type of a formal process? Because you already own the lines, the lines are existing? I'm just trying to-
I can, I can speak to veg maintenance. Um, of, of the lines applicable to your town, there's only one FERC-regulated line, which is the 380. It's a 345 line.
Okay.
The other lines are 115 lines. We take them just as seriously as the FERC lines. But in, in regards to our reporting, it's self-reporting, where we, uh, we, we have documented a vegetation maintenance plan and program, which indicates, so specifically, let me digress for a second. We don't use, uh, herbicides in the state, as you guys know. Um, as part of ever-source, we mechanically mow everything, which means no chemical preventatives. So that's why you see Brown and Sons come out with the Bronosaurus. On the 345 lines, we tell our regulators that we will mow them on a three-year basis. On the 115 lines, we mow them on a four-year basis. And we document, and that's what my primary role is, is confirming compliance that we complete those standards on an annual basis. Um, we also tell them that we have an aggressive hazard tree program, as well as a side trimming program, to make sure all of our internal and federal standards are met for safety in regards to vegetation around power lines. So, um, the 380 line gets mowed every three years, we hazard tree it every time we go out, and we side-trim it every other time we go out. We also inspect those facilities twice annually via helicopter for veg maintenance, and we walk every line on foot once annually, regardless of, uh, vegetation cycle, just to put human eyes on it on the ground. So more or less, we tell FERC that we're gonna do that, and then they hire a guy like me to keep track of it and make sure that we continue to do it. And it's, it's, uh, evident in the amount of money that we spend to maintain. We have dollar amounts per acre to do the mowing and, uh, prices per tree for the, for the tree work.
And along the same lines, the upgrades on the 380, is that, is that going to increase electrical capacity going through that particular line?
No.
Okay.
It, uh, it just ensures that the electricity will be transmitted safely and that all of those structures and facilities are up to spec and standard.
Right.
And, and a storm hardening capacity can withstand the elements of nature and that there's no, again, negligent circumstances.
Right.
We, we inspect poles annually when there would, have a company go out there and take a look at them. One of our biggest offenders is woodpeckers who, who like to, uh, bang on wooden poles, so inspect it. At, on the 345s annually, every single pole, every single insulator, every single guywire, every single structure.
Thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it. Thank you for entertaining me and answering my questions.
Anytime, I'd love to talk about it.
Or, or humoring me, whichever, whichever way you wanna, uh-
No, and I, I think we want to, uh, we want to gain out of this too, is, uh, who, who would you like Sarah and Logan to reach out to in regards to the town properties, either on or adjacent to the power lines?
I'll, I'll defer to the chair to make that determination.
I'm just gonna suggest, contact the town manager, um, or Paul. Um, they would, uh, be able to give you the direction if it was other than that.
Great, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, what I'd like to ask of you, if you think it's appropriate to ask the town manager and the team, that, um, when ever-source provides a schedule of, of dates and times, that maybe it's possible to put it out on NEXOL Alert, so that people that are on NEXOL will know that they're, that they're gonna be in the community. There's some people that might not watch this tonight, but, um, I want to make sure they have the information.
Yep, they use that regularly and effectively, so, uh, you know, if you do notify the schedule, notify the town manager of the schedule, they could do that, have that done.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing- Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me the time, and thank you to the EverSource team for coming tonight. And thank you. Appreciate it.
Peter?
Just a, a quick note. I've had a lot of years prior, uh, with my experience on the police department, I've worked with Elizabeth. I'm very impressed with the level of communications from ten years ago, when we've had some series of bad storms. Uh, it's been a, it's been a work in progress and working with the police communications and your communications center. You guys have been very responsive to us. I appreciate that. Um, and in town, I know there's been some trouble spots, whether it was illegal shooting or partying, and we've asked you guys to help us out with your property, and you guys have done a great job. So I just wanted to say that. And I hope the spirit of cooperation, which I'm sure will continue.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Anything further? Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much.
Very nice job.
Thank you, you too.
All right.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. Uh, next item on the agenda under appointments is our annual, annual review with the planning board. Um, for Town Merrimack Charter, Section six dash six, at least annually, there should be a review with the planning board. This item is to highlight the board's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act upon. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it seems kind of strange to introduce myself, but for the record, my name is Bob Baston. I'm the chairman of the planning board. I have with me tonight Alistair Mills, our vice chair, and also for our moral support, we have Nelson Disco. You might have met him before. He's been around town for a while. Um, who is an alternate on the board and the chair before me for three decades. So I guess four, four and a half decades of planning board involvement. Um, I'm, I'm glad to have them both here to help answer some questions, if you have any. I'm always glad to come here and visit with you guys and tell you what we went up to and, um, and, talk about any of the interesting things that we have going on. Um, so the first thing that I wanted to do is, um, I, I got kind of a list of things that I wanted to mention and talk to you about. Unfortunately, the planning board had an individual alternate member who, um, passed away over the wintertime, um, dealing with snow. And Jeff Sebring is his name, um, great guy, really smart, really great planning board member. Um, and I wanted to mention that and, and tell you that he'll be remembered and, um, and missed on the planning board. Um, so it's sort of our unfortunate news for the year, but I didn't want to go without mentioning, um, his, his gr- great contribution to the board and unfortunately his passing. Um, the second thing that I wanted to mention is that, um, the board has also added a new member, Paul McLaughlin. You guys would have met him in the interview process, as well as in the appointment process in considering him. Um, he's been an alternate for a few months now. He's been a great contributor to the board and a really nice guy. I think it's really a great team that we have together as the planning board. Um, with Paul's addition, um, the planning board has all of its regular members and two alternates. Um, there is an empty alternate position, so we're able to have three alternates if we need them. Um, so far, we haven't had any trouble getting a quorum with the bunch that we have, but there's always an opportunity if someone else is interesting and serving on the board. So I wanted to mention that. Um, the next thing that I wanted to mention is some thank yous. Um, the community development staff, led by Tim Thompson, with Jillian and Robert Price, um, helping out are invaluable to the board. And so obviously, they're the town's employees and under your direction. And we thank you for all of that support. They are really fantastic. Um, in addition to the community development staff, um, help from the fire department with Chief Courier and Captain Manuelli, um, from the police department with Chief Doyle, from the public works department with Kyle and Don, um, Parks and Rec Department with Matt Gasparius, although Matt's probably more of a help with the Rotary Club than the planning board. But, um, we really do get a lot of support, and the town departments work so well with us. There's never any, uh, animosity. There's never any resistance. There's never any delays. Uh, we really just, um, am so pleased to have the, the interactions and the working relationships that we've had with them. Um, they all deserve credit for that, and that's why I wanted to mention that to you, since you're the bosses of all of those folks on the staff. So, thank you for that. Um, the fourth thing that I want to mention, so let me go through some of the things that the planning board has been up to lately since the last time we met. Um, I don't want to necessarily recite a whole bunch of statistics to you that are kind of boring and also published in the town's annual report. Um, but I'll go over some of, some of the more important, more the interesting ones. Um, so in 2016, we had twenty-one regular meetings. I think we've had about nine so far in 2017. Um, it's resulted in a number of commercial reviews, as well as, um, some residential subdivision plans. In 2016, there were sixty-six cluster lots and fifteen new residential building lots. Um, that's a, a fairly significant number. Um, it's not quite what we had in 2015, but both 2015 and sixteen are drastically more than there were for a lot of years before that, wherein 2014, it was, it was twenty lots, and thirteen, it was thirty-four, and twelve, there was only one. So to see those significant numbers of residential lots come along, kind of speaks to the economy, but I think it also speaks to Merrimack being, uh, a place that people want to come, and they want to get going with some development. Um, and that's something that's important for us. Um, with respect to, um, commercial developments, in 2016, there was ten commercial, two industrial, and four residential site plans. Um, some of the more significant ones were the Extended Stay Hotel near Exit Eleven, which replaces the old Merrimack Hotel, and obviously bulldozing the old one and getting that, um, empty building out of there has been a big part of that. Uh, approval of Franklin Savings Bank on Dobson Way is another. Um, there's approval, the planning board approved a new wireless communication tower off Turkey Hill Road, which, when it gets built, it's a Verizon Tower, and that will help to fill in an area of town where the service isn't so great. So tho- some was, those are some of the significant ones. Um, the, the Prime Alternative Treatment Center was something that was approved as a conditional use permit. So that's a little bit of an interesting one. Um, so far in 2017, um, we've dealt with, uh, another mixed use, see, uh, conditional use permit over at the Outlet Mall at the foot of a hill, um, which has been approved. Um, the expansion of Buckley's with the Abbott Cafe next to it, or Buckley's Cafe. Um, and so those are some of the highlights of the interesting projects that we've had going on. It's really been, um, quite a busy board. Um, I get a chance in my professional life to see some other boards that the towns just don't have that level of development. And, um, I also hear from, uh, individuals who appear before our planning board, or our zoning board, or other boards, that Merrimack really does have a, a good process in place where the, where applicant feel they're getting a fair shake. And that's really the important thing. It's not that we have different standards than anybody else in terms of what we require of people, but we have a fair process. We have an efficient process. We have hearings where we talk about the things that are within our regulations and not things that kind of drift astray. Um, and so I'm proud of that. I think that it, it reflects good on, on the town. Um, I hope that it's something that the, the town council is happy to have as well. Uh, I think it really makes a big difference for the town to have a place where people want to come and do business. So that's kind of what the planning board's been up to. Um, let me see if there's anything else that I wanted to make sure that I touched before. I can never, ever, ever, ever not come visit you guys without talking about sidewalks, at least a little bit. So I'll finish with sidewalks and then
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. So, um, I won't, I won't bore you with a bunch of details about sidewalks and all kinds of things. Um, we have an opportunity to receive some free help from the National Regional Planning Commission, as well as a student at Plymouth State University at developing kind of a, a better sidewalk plan for the town. Um, we've got this ordinance that makes us build sidewalks everywhere in all of the arterial and all of the collector streets. That's like fifty-something miles of roads where we could be having people build sidewalks unless we grant waivers. Plus, all of the roads in the commercial and industrial district, if you do a commercial site plan, our regulations would have a sidewalk built unless we grant a waiver. And that's just a nutty plan. I mean, we don't need sidewalks in all those places. We really need to scale that back and focus it on things that make sense. You guys have, um, approved a couple of grant applications for sidewalks consistent with the Town Center Master Plan. In essence, what we could do with some of the help from the National Regional Planning Commission is kind of a, a next phase of that Town Center Master Plan, really focus on the things that are important with sidewalks. The, i- it is just a plan. It isn't necessarily a commitment to spend any money on building anything. Um, but it would help us to, uh, focus and figure out what our regulations are supposed to be. Uh, and, and one of the most important reasons for that for me is that putting applicants in a position to grant waivers, to ask for waivers all the time, um, really puts them in some uncertainty as to whether the board's going to give that to them or not, or whether they're going to have to build some sidewalks, which could be pretty expensive. And what are the criteria for a waiver? And the statutory criteria are kind of vague and kind of loose. And so I'd rather have the applicants know for sure, for sure, when they're dealing with a certain road, that they don't have to ask for a waiver, because it's not required there anymore. It's not required on, you know, the north end of Babusick Lake Road, or, um, you know, the, all arterials along collectors, Amherst, um, uh, you name them. They're all over the place. Uh, we've, it, basically anything that's got line striped on it is, will be either a collector or an arterial road. Um, so why would you have sidewalks on all of those places? Um, we've got a plan that's built twenty-six miles of sidewalk in town already, plus the couple of grants that you guys have supplied. And it's great to have them. I'm not complaining about that. I kind of like sidewalks, but I know the, the pressure it puts on for maintaining them. But if you actually had sidewalks in a focused plan, you probably would build about twelve in town. And you'd have DW Highway from north to south, the Babusick Lake to the middle school, and Continental Boulevard to the mall. That would be about twelve or fourteen miles. We got twenty-six, because we got this silly unfocused plan that puts them everywhere. So, uh, I hope that I could get you guys to give us at least a defec courage. I don't think that it, it, we were dues-paying member of the National Regional Planning Commission. I don't think that it's accepting a gift or a donation in the normal sense of what you guys consider on your agenda to accept their help, because we are a dues-paying member. But, um, I do want to make sure that it's something that you guys support, because, uh, there's no sense in the planning board running off in a direction if it's not going to have the support of the council. So that's my only request of you guys, is whether you would support us accessing that free help. And other than that, I'm glad to answer any questions you have, and get out of your way for the night. Well, no, I'm not out of your way. I'm going to do Rotary thing right after, but
That's right. You're not moving.
So, uh, thoughts, questions?
Thank you, Bob. Actually, I remember the day you talked about the number of residential units and all. I think it was in eighty-five, there were eight hundred and fifty residential units permitted that year. Nelson's telling me yes. So, uh, it was a substantial difference than at two thousand twelve, I guess, at one. But
Yeah.
And also, your comments about how people are happy to come, you know, they might not be happy, but they appreciate, uh, the user-friendly way. And that's something that I, I think the council for years now has been desirous of and, and have seen the results over many years now. It's been working out nicely. And so we appreciate that. Um, Peter?
Bob, um, I've been hearing some, uh, some rumors and stuff, uh, about the Old Shaws down here.
Sure.
Can you fill us in? Can you talk about what?
Yeah.
I've been hearing plans about that.
Yeah, they've already submitted an official plan, so it isn't secret anymore. It's a public document. Um, the, the folks that, um, acquired that plaza came before the board with a conceptual design, I don't know, six months or so ago, and talked about some maybes that they'd try to explore. And now they've got an actual official proposal, which we were going to hear on our May second meeting, but because of some problems with the notice to a butters, we had to delay that and deal with it at our next coming up meeting. So what they're trying to do is, um, they're going to build, uh, two structures in the front part of the parking lot on pad sites. They're both restaurants. One's a more formal sit-down restaurant, one's more of a fast-foody kind of a restaurant. And then they're going to, uh, give the rest of the existing structures there a facelift to make the facades more appealing, a little offsets, little tree, landscape, kind of. Um, and then they've got, actually, I think, um, in the proposal, a handful of potential tenants that are ready to go in there and do something. So a real breath of life for that, um, shopping center, because, man, I don't know, what was it, when, when Shaws left it, and, you know, of course, then every time you open up Facebook, you see everybody still convinced that Shaws holds leases on that place and won't let anybody move into it, and all of those things. And it's one of the favorite undeveloped or, or in need of redevelopment sites you see around town.
Yeah.
So that's what I know about what they've proposed. Um, I, stay tuned, or, you know, tune into our meeting week after, week after next.
It might be worth just adding that the developer is an out-of-state developer. And I think, if I'm right, but when he actually did his presentation, he is talking about, um, good quality stores coming in in place of, you know, he's not going to put in junk stores. He's, he's looking to put in better-than-average places for people to spend their money.
My understanding is the developer is affiliated with, or the same developer that controls the Settlers Green Outlet Malls in Conway.
Okay.
And so they're not, um, just sort of putting a front sign in the window. They're relatively sophisticated at figuring out who are the real retailers that, you know, might be out there to look for some space. So, um, you know, good for us to have them, them come around.
Absolutely. Dan?
Just a follow-up on the, on this topic. Are you going to be requesting a traffic study for, for the developer on that project?
Uh, I don't know what the staff has recommended. Certainly, they have to do peer review, but the problem, not the problem, the, the, uh, idea of a traffic study for that site is a little bit confused, because the original site was, was designed for, um, a huge amount of traffic. And almost everything that people come and, and propose as a redevelopment is some fraction of that.
Okay.
And so it's difficult to say, you know, you're taking a site that was meant for, I don't know what the number is, but a thousand cars an hour, and you're saying, well, you need a new traffic study to do two hundred cars an hour in that site.
Which makes no sense. And I, I agree. It makes no sense if that's the volume that they're predicting.
Uh, the site where the Old Shaws was, was built in conjunction with the East Gate or East Ridge, whatever that condo, that apartment building is, it's right there. And both of them flow out through that red light. So, um, with a signalized intersection, there's really not much you would ever look at to say, you need more. You, what, what more could you ask of folks to, to do there? So
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselor. Dwyer, appreciate it.
Any concern with the two pad sites for restaurants that all sudden, and the redevelopment of the current, um, mall, lack of a better term, all sudden parking drives up, there's not enough parking?
So, uh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, that would be a concern. So, um, firstly, I apologize to the chair. I'm so used to being chair that I was calling on people to
Trust me, we're quite informal, as you can tell, for sure.
I'll let you do your job. Um, so, yeah, it is, so, um, in our planning board regulations, there's, uh, parking calculations that are done. They're analyzed by staff. They're peer-reviewed by our peer reviewer for these site plans. Um, they're developed specific to whatever the uses are. So the restaurants will, they'll count up the number of seats in the restaurant, the number of employees, and they'll have to have that number, plus the number for the other restaurant, plus the number for the rest of the mall. And if they don't have enough parking for what they've proposed, they've either got to ask us for a waiver, or they can't put that use in there. They've got to come up with some other way to solve the problem. Um, so it'll be analyzed. Um, other than applying the formula that's in our regulation, which, you know, Tim kind of developed from his expertise, um, the real key to that is, um, getting information from peer review, whether they've met our standard and whether the applicant thinks that they need some more. So, yeah, it's important.
I'm sure you can think of a, I, I, offhand, I can think of two or three sites where I've seen that happen before. And all of a sudden, you don't want to go there anymore because you can't park your car.
Yeah.
Whether it's a Chili's or, uh, there's a, a bunch of chains where they've taken that empty parking spaces, planted a, a restaurant, and all of a sudden, uh, the rest of the parking lots just packed up. So I, I'm, I'm glad it's getting developed, but don't get me wrong. I just feel like, uh, two restaurants and the redevelopment of the current facade just seems, boy, that parking spaces are going to get eaten up really, really quick.
They certainly could. And so we'll absolutely take a careful look at that thing. Um, one of the other things that's always interesting to me is, I'm always attentive to weird traffic patterns inside of a parking lot where, you know, it's not so much they're limited on parking, but you've got to go over here and that.
Too many curbs and trees built.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, right.
Um, the other issue that the planning board's always attentive to is making sure they don't use their parking lot for snow storage. Because if they pile all the snow in the parking lot, then they eat up some of their parking spaces. And if they want to do that, then they've got to have enough that they've still got them left over.
Right.
Um, a lot of these sites, the Old Shaws, even actually both of the other Shaws and Home Depot and all of those, were built under the old parking regulations, which generated huge numbers of parking spaces for those lots.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you look at the Shaws by Exit Eleven, you hardly ever see that lot full.
Right.
It's kind of full by the restaurant and the liquor store in, in that area.
Right.
Um, but, uh, over by the actual grocery store, that parking lot's huge.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's likely that this old lot as well was overbuilt in a time when parking calculations were done differently than they are now.
Great.
Um, but, uh, good concern, and the board absolutely looks at it in some detail, not only with our own eye, but with some experts that help us.
One last question, and don't be shocked, but I am completely in support of your focusing on your sidewalks.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
No prob- I think it's a great idea.
Well, thank you for that. And I noticed that in some of those grant applications, that you were actually making the motion or seconding the motion to, to pursue some of those grants for sidewalks. Nelson, would you like me to say that a little louder?
Oh, that's beautiful. Just make sure it gets in the minutes.
Thank you, Counselor.
Peter, yes?
I'm just going to follow up on Counselor Dwyer. I agree. We've got sidewalks to nowhere in some places, and we need them on Route Three. I mean, one day I saw a guy in a wheelchair moving on Route Three, trying to move up the roadway. Um, and there's no sidewalks there. You should at least have a sidewalk on one side, especially the built-up main areas, so. so...
Bill, and, and I'll, and I'll join the parade, I, I have long believed that there should be sidewalks at a minimum on, on Daniel Webster Highway, especially at the, um, at the, the Wire Road by, uh, the MYA, where that bridge narrows, and I know that Community Development's taken a close look at expanding that particular part of the bridge, and including a sidewalk in that, that plan. At a minimum, Daniel Webster should have, should have sidewalks at least running up to, uh, Bedford Road down to Greeley Street at a minimum.
That, that area that you mentioned, Bedford Road to Greeley Street, is the part of DW Highway we control, and north and south of that, the state controls it, and you get to get into development agreements and all sorts of things, maintenance with the sidewalks over there. But, you know what, if we built the sidewalks that were, that, that a, that a plan showed were needed, by the time you get that far north and south, we're all gonna be retired and off this boards, and, you know, the next generation of folks can solve that problem.
That's debatable, Bob.
So... You're gonna live forever.
Absolutely.
Excellent, good plan.
It's the plan. Uh, anything further? Thank you so much, gentlemen.
So, I did hear enough, a, a few people that were commenting about accessing this free help, I, I don't know if you wanna, if, a consensus of the board, or is, have we heard enough that I could regard it as a consensus and say yes to some of this help? Okay.
I think, yeah, I think so, I mean, unless, enough of everybody thinks that we need a presentation, but I think the simplicity of it is, is, you know, is there, so...
And, Mr. Chairman, this, we, we pay a fee to the NRPC every year, this is part of...
Oh, sure.
You know, this is part of what we're paying for, is the expertise and the, uh, the, the technical help, so...
Right, but I think the concern that Bob timidly went out, on a limb with the sidewalk conversation, was that there was much animosity for much discussion in the past, and not, not a good term, but you know what I'm saying, uh, about sidewalks and the expansiveness of them, and the cost of maintaining, where this will hone that down, and I think, I think it's a good idea, so...
Absolutely, I agree.
I think, uh, I don't think it requires anything further from the council, I think.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here, thank you guys for what you do, you have a thankless job, tonight I'll thank you, so it won't be thankless tonight, but, um, you guys get to do a, a whole lot of stuff that I'm really glad you're here doing, and I'm home doing something else, so, thank you.
Well, we're always thankful for Tom Koenig, uh, joining you on Tuesday nights, because it saves us from having to do your job, so, we appreciate it.
There you go, and Bill comes sometimes.
Every now and then I make a cameo.
Good.
Special guest appearance.
Thank you again.
By the way, Alastair, Alastair, the, uh, the Mint, very nice, I like the color of the shrimp, Mint, good call.
Okay.
Good call. Good fashion sense.
Alrighty.
It makes a difference from the uniform I have to wear most of the time.
And well-wear them, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Alrighty, next item on the agenda, under appointments, is the two thousand seventeen Rotary Club of Merrimack Family Fund Day presentation, council's gonna be presented, uh, um, the thoughts and ideas for the Merrimack's Family Fund Day, and Bob, welcome back, and welcome.
All right, Mr. Chairman, council members, good evening, touch that, touch that right there, there you go.
There we are.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, council members, good evening, I'm Troy Arthun, President of the Merrimack Rotary Club, I think you're well acquainted with my fellow Rotarian, Bob Best, and, uh, let me introduce Neil Anketell, Neil is a member of our Rotary Club, and he's done the lion's share of the work as our chairman for the event, for the Merrimack Fourth of July Independence Day Celebration. So, we're thrilled to be here to present with you our ongoing plans, uh, but first, we wanna thank you for a great partnership that's developed over many years. We look at this as the town's event and your event, and we're happy to be of service to help manage and execute the event, leading up to it and on the day of. So, the planning for the two thousand eighteen event has already started, but we're here to talk about two thousand seventeen. We'd like to thank the council and Paul McCauley for his guidance with our planning, uh, we'd also like to thank Matt Casperius from, uh, Parks and Rec for his efforts in organizing the parade and the fireworks, and he's also been of counsel to us in the planning. But, in addition to the Rotary Club, there are a number of town agencies and departments that are instrumental in pulling off a great event. So, first of all, we wanna thank the Police Department, Chief Doyle and Captain Roy for their planning, but the planning this year actually started with then-Captain Albert, now councilmember Albert, who's helped us with planning for traffic control, patrol of the event. They've also, uh, agreed to provide the Seatbelt Convincer as an attraction during that day. Um, there'll be some demonstrations by the new K-9 unit Dallas, and the K-9 officer as well, and of course, the Honor Guard is part of the opening ceremonies, that will be at approximately two o'clock this year, and I say approximately because it begins when the parade ends, and there has to be a little bit of wiggle room in that schedule. So, from the Fire Department, we'd like to thank Chief Courier and Captain Manuelli for their assistance and guidance in safety and health planning, as well as providing the, a fire ladder demo on the day of. So, again, from Parks and Rec, Matt's been a tremendous help to us, Matt Casperius, as well as the Public Works Department. The entire event happens almost exclusively on the school grounds, so we wanna thank Marge Chaffrey and the School Department in Merrimack for their support and their guidance. Um, we also use, uh, this year, the Upper Elementary School for the Pancake Breakfast, and that's a major change this year, and the reason for that change is there is a, an HVAC renovation that's gonna be happening in the high school cafeteria, so, we're gonna move this year. The good news is, that venue is closer to the main action of the Fourth of July, so that's a plus, that's a positive, and we'll see for two thousand eighteen and beyond where we'll have that, and we'll see how that works out this year. Um, so, the buildings and grounds and the facilities and the kitchen staff making the facilities available to us are a tremendous help. Um, the Pancake Breakfast really kicks off the day from eight to eleven at the Upper Elementary School. Um, we always try to balance making it affordable with offering a varied menu, uh, Barbara Michael is our member that organizes the Pancake Breakfast, and she marshals a number of, uh, groups and individuals to volunteer to support that, in addition to our Rotarians. Uh, the menu this year, uh, is gonna be, of course, pancakes, and sausage, and other various things, but the price will be five dollars for adults, four dollars for seniors and children, and if you ask me what defines a senior or a child, I'm gonna pass on that description.
If they ask for it.
If they ask for it. Um, we, uh, for entertainment, uh, this year, we have returning the marquee event on the main stage, a band called Studio Two, which is a Beatles cover band, and we had a tremendous response to their performance last year. Emceeing the event is John Irish, a local businessman, he owns a Analog DB sound service, and donates in kind, uh, the majority of his services for the day to do that. Uh, we also have a DJ, Darren Roy, who's gonna be, uh, spinning some tunes for us that day, geared more toward the, the teen market and young adult market. Um, we plan to have the Historical Society again there this year, the library's asked to have a presence at the midway, um, we have a, a roving magician, we have face painting, uh, bounce houses, a climbing wall, so for the, the teens and young adults, the climbing wall and the teen stage is something that we began last year. Um, in the vendor space, you have the obligatory ice cream and shaved ice, and burgers and dogs, and chicken, and that sort of thing. Um, we also, last year, had, uh, kind of a, a chair massage area, folks wanted a little relaxation midday, it's a long day for everyone, uh, but worthwhile. Our major sponsor this year, uh, returning as our founder sponsor, is Merrimack Immediate Care, they're part of the Southern New Hampshire Health System. But we cannot pull off the event without a number of volunteers, both in and outside of Rotary, and Bob has marshaled all of the volunteer efforts, and I'm gonna turn the mic over to him to share, uh, that news with you.
Thank you, Troy, and thank you again for allowing me to be here again. Um, so, the Fourth of July volunteers, the effort that we do, um, we don't necessarily count and track all of the Rotarian hours that go into it, but the folks who volunteer who aren't Rotarians, there's about two-hundred hours that go into just hosting that one event, setting it up, watching all of the activities that are going on there, from the art contests and arts and crafts, and chalk, and chalk art, and bounce houses, and all of those things, selling tickets and doing those things. Two-hundred hours is about what it takes, and, so, we rely on a bunch of groups in the communities, there's several high school clubs, everybody knows the First Robotics, um, uh, MHS First Group, the, the Merrimack Honor Society has always been a, a good help from us, uh, for us, um, this year, we're gonna also have some help from the Interact Club at the high school. Out in the community, um, the Friends of the Dog Park are always good volunteers for us, and that helps them raise a little bit of money that contributes to the development of the park, for all these groups, this is a bit of a fundraiser for them as well. Faith Episcopal Church has always been a great help, Knights of Columbus has always been a great help. This year, we should, uh, have some volunteers from the International Association of Firefighters, um, we should also have some help from the Merrimack Football Team, the Merrimack High School Football Team, and so, with all of that together, um, that's where our volunteers are gonna come from to make this event go, and for us, what we do, um, is, the, the ticket sales and those sorts of things, uh, support a contribution back to all of these groups. So, Rotary Club, you know, is, we're, we're here to help the community, and these are all groups in the community that we're glad to help. So, they help us, we help them. Um, but, I'm glad to be here on a microphone, on a TV, and all of that, asking for more volunteers, 'cause there's never too many, there's, um, there's just an endless need of, uh, of folks to come help, not only on the Fourth of July, but you gotta set all that stuff up before, and you gotta put it all away after, and sometimes, the after is the part where nobody shows up to help. So, if anybody's out there watching that wants to, just get in touch with me through however, the town's website or whatever, so, thanks.
So, among the members of our club, we have, uh, varied and deep experience as professionals, so, we have tradesmen, attorneys, accountants, financial planners, educators, and, uh, and public servants. But in addition to that, as Bob mentioned, that those volunteers really are what make it happen for us. But in addition to that, um, we are a relatively small club, so we are always looking for more hands and more members. So, for anyone listening at home who has an interest in participating and being involved in the community, and perhaps involved with the Rotary Club of Merrimack, um, we'd love to talk to you, because more hands make for lighter work.
Yes.
So, what, what questions do you have for us?
Check.
Oh, yes, I noticed, um, a, a couple of years ago, the library, uh, shared a big tent, it was a big tent organization, I guess, 'cause it's shared with, I think, the Historical Society, and maybe another group, and it seemed like a smart thing. Um, are, are you still gonna have it on the middle school field?
Um, it'll be on the, the middle school upper element, or the Upper Elementary School fields along Gera Drive.
Yeah, yeah.
There won't be anything at the, at the middle school.
Yeah, uh, this one, oh, that, right, um, I, 'cause I thought that was a great layout, and I was, um, thinking of encouraging, uh, people who, uh, wanted to have a little fundraiser to get, who gets those tents, the, the groups themselves?
We, we, well, for a number of the tents, for the food service tent, um, we have a, a tent for, we'd call it a green room or a changing room for performers at the main stage, um, we have a tent for the Rotary slash First Aid Station.
Oh, yeah.
But for any individual vendors, they, they will provide their own tent.
Mm-hmm.
And, as you're aware, in the north country, a year or two ago, there was an incident and a storm when a large circus tent collapsed, and there was, uh, some unfortunate deaths and injuries. Um, we take great care in complying with the manufacturer's guidance for how those are put up and how they're secured, so that in a wind, they'll stay put.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, we, we arrange for some, but many of the vendors provide their own, but they're the smaller ten-by-ten craft tents, and we ensure that they're anchored properly, but we don't have near the concern that you would with a large circus tent, with the structural issues.
Yeah.
But in terms of the groups that come, Historical Society, your library, and all of those, um, if they're able and interested in, in that, we always have the doors open for them, so, those groups can come out if they, it, you know, sometimes, they've got some other activities, um, that go on on July third, or, or, or elsewhere, where they're focused in a different direction, but if they want to be there, um, we're always arms open for them.
And the, the libraries also, uh, we've communicated with them about having a presence, I think they're also planning to be in the parade, but they wanted to, to have a, uh, I'll call it a vendor booth space, uh, the Historical Society was there last year, we, we hope to have them there again this year.
Yes, good, good. What's your proportion of, of nonprofits versus, um, uh, commercial?
Uh, it, it varies, it's hard to say, I've never looked at it in those terms before. Um, I, I would say it's probably, uh, two-thirds commercial, meaning food, or face painter, or some other entertainment, uh, and one-third, community groups like, um, you know, the library, on occasion, there are, uh, the local, um, political party groups that wish to participate, and they'll be there as well. Um, but it's probably two-thirds, one-third, commercial to nonprofit or community group, vendor space.
Yeah, good, well, good luck with it.
Thank you.
It's so much fun, it's really a high point in the year.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Uh, Paul?
So, Troy, it's July fourth, about two o'clock till fireworks, rain or shine?
Rain or shine, on July fourth.
So, it'll be held on July fourth, no matter what?
Yes.
That's correct.
So...
Very good. Is there anything further? See, and I'm, I'm always impressed with Rotary and everything you guys do, it's, uh, it's intriguing efforts that go behind it, and it's always comes off, well, it appears without a hitch, it, it works perfectly, and we appreciate, and I'm glad to hear two thousand and eighteen has already begun, because I know we don't have to look for somebody next year, you're there. And I, and we, I think I speak for everybody here, we appreciate it for sure, and, uh, I know the town does.
Well, again, it's our honor to really show you our, our appreciation for the partnership that's developed over the last several years to put on a great event for the town.
Yep, no, absolutely, thank you so much.
Excellent work, you do appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, next on the agenda, um, is, uh, under appointments, number four, is the Manchester Artists Association is here this evening to request use of Watson Park for an annual art show, which will be happening on August twenty-sixth, and good evening.
Good evening, I'm Laurie LaFleur, I'm the show chair...
I'm sorry, could you just make sure that light is turned on?
Oh.
Thank you.
I'm Laurie LaFleur, I'm the, uh, show chair for the Manchester Artists Association, and we respectfully request the use of the Watson Park for, uh, August twenty-sixth, with a rain date of August twenty-seventh.
Very good.
We've done this show twice now in Merrimack, and it's working out very well, the artists really like the, the Watson Park because of its approach, they can load in and load without very, too much difficulty.
Yeah, no, it's, it, it seems like a nice location.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
And also, we do not require anything more of, than the use of, of the, of the grounds, because anything that they bring in, they gotta bring out, that's the rule, and I don't think we require police or anything else, so, I think, but it's been a very good, um, deal for us in the past two years, so we appreciate what you've done for us.
We appreciate your comment, too. Does anybody have any questions? Tom?
Um, so, you're not anticipating needing a police, but what kind of crowds or what kind of volume of people do you expect?
It's not a very big crowd, just people come in and kind of browse, you know, by very, we don't have crowds, like, sometimes we'll have like bunches all at once, and then it'll get quiet, because people just browse around the artwork, looking at it, and they don't usually decide on a two or three-hundred-dollar painting on the spur of the moment, they'll think about it, and then, then come back later.
Okay, but you're there from seven to five, seven AM to five PM?
No, we, we wanna be there from ten to four, after four o'clock, I think, but crowds go home.
I, I can understand that, I'm just trying to get a handle on, so, you're expecting ten to four?
Well, we, we expect to be there at least an hour before the show to set up, and an hour after to take down.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you bring it in all your own equipment?
Yes, and we use the ten-by-ten tents, and also, we make sure that everybody's anchored properly with weights or anchors.
Okay, are you gonna have any kind of concessions, any kind of water, or...
If we, uh, if we have, it'll be somebody else asking permission from you to be there.
So, you're not planning it yourself?
No, we're not planning it this time. We'd probably invite the scouts or somebody like that to serve lunching.
Okay.
It's kind of early yet for a commitment from them.
And you've done this a couple of years in a row now, is that right?
Yes.
And it's worked out well?
Very, very well, yep.
Great, thank you.
And I mean, more years we go in the same location.
The better.
The more artists we attract, and the more of the crowd we attract also.
Right. The Town Center Committee talks about it, and the numbers, we believe, will continue to grow. And it may come a point where it's a massive crowd that needs crowd control. But right now, I don't believe that that's the issue.
Okay, good.
Is there anything further? Bill?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Town Council approve the request, the Manchester Artists Association Art in the Park Show, to be scheduled at Watson Park on Saturday, August 26, 2017, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, with an alternate rain date being Sunday, August 27th, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM.
Is there a second?
It's written right on here.
They just went.
Basically, so they can get things set up and take out, yeah.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jackie. A motion by Bill Boyd, seconded by Jackie. Any further discussion? Any discussion on the motion, Bill?
Just very quickly, thank you for coming to Merrimack. Very happy to have this type of programming. I think for all of us, when we were looking at Watson Park being one of our crown jewels and being part of our town center, we envisioned stuff like this coming to town to be able to provide different level of interest for all, for different people from all types of walks of life. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further comments? Then I'll call a question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. It's 6-0-0. Thank you so very much.
Okay. One thing I wanted to add, that we do carry an insurance policy.
Okay, good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no public hearings this evening. Legislative updates from our state representatives or senators, seeing none. Town manager report, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. Don came in about a month and a half ago now to talk about.
Don.
Cholmala.
Thank you.
Came in to talk about the sidewalk project. Finance went out, and we bid the project. The bids came in high, higher than we were estimating. We went back to the drawing board a little bit. revamped the sidewalk project, took some of the stuff out, specifically the sidewalk that ran on this side of the building, from the corner of my offices, all the way down to Booze Creek Road, took them off the project. The cutting of the tree, we're going to do internally. The light, the ballard lights, we took out of the project at this time. Went to rebid it. Got two bids in. They range from $76,000 to $95,000, I believe. We're getting ready to award the project to the low bidder. But just wanted to come back in front of the council, because I know we talked about it, and wanted to let you know. The project's still going to happen between the two weeks in July for the center, for the center of the walkway in between these two buildings, the east and west wing, will be the two weeks in July that we talked about. And then also, going up to the town council chambers will also be done probably prior to that. So, we're going to get all new sidewalks in the town, all this, around the summer for around $76, $77,000.
Very good. Paul, what lights were you talking about, the lights?
There were, I won't say decorative, but like, the courthouse had the ballard lights.
Oh, okay.
So we were thinking about putting a couple ballard lights around. Those were expensive when we looked at, in the first bid process, they were very expensive. So we took them out. We're going to actually run conduit so that, so underneath the sidewalk, so that if eventually, if we did want to put them in, we can put them in.
Yep, very good. Thank you. Jackie?
How much more were the sidewalks for this side of the town hall?
When we did the whole bid, it was $140,000.
Oh, so another, 60?
But that included the lights, too.
Yep.
So, the gentleman who bid on, we had one gentleman bid on it twice, and that was about $40,000 to $50,000, just this piece right here.
Oh, yeah, okay. And Paul?
And the lights. This piece.
I think all we need is the distance up to the stairwell.
Yeah, right. This, and the lights was about $40,000 to $50,000 difference.
What are ballard lights? Are they those stumpy little?
Yeah, they're the stumpy little lights that, like at the court there, look like a cement, a cement pillar with a light on top of it.
Glad the artist is gone. Not here to just talk about stumpy lights.
Stumpy lights. Well, I was going to say that they're very handsome, actually. They are stumpy. You have to admit that.
Paul, is this going to include, is this granite curbing?
Yes, this includes the granite curbing on both sides of the, of the drive. We've changed the granite curbing on that side, made it more of a slat curve than the up-and-down curve. But it's going to have to be granite on both sides. So it's going to be on the sidewalk, and that's going to be on the lawn area, too. So it's going to connect the curbing that's already on the side that leads up to the courthouse. We're going to continue that around.
I want, I'd like to know, Tom, if I could ask Tom a question. What was your, yeah, that's all right. Why would you think that it should end at the stairs?
We talked about it when they were originally presenting the project. We didn't, that several of us didn't feel like it needed to go all the way down to the lake road.
Oh, yeah, to the lake road.
Because they have the steps out the center here. And so, I think the plan had it going from that corner of the building all the way to the lake road.
Okay.
And I could see it coming at least to this, to the doorway, because that allows you to walk on sidewalk around the corner of the building.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Maybe, because the parking is there, it ought to come a little further than, you know, to the edge of the building.
Yeah, that's all, that, yeah.
I don't see it as a tremendous loss at this point, because there's still pavement
No, I don't either. But I did think that probably it should extend to the, to the end of the building.
Oh, it's going to be, it's going to be down to the end, and it's going to be?
Well, to go to this corner, it won't come all the way down this way.
Yeah, I agree.
Paul, did anybody from Merrimack bid on the project?
I did not get a Merrimack certificate in with the bid packages. There were some, there was, there was a, used to be a Merrimack company that bid the first time. And I don't know about the winning bid this time, if he's Merrimack or not. But I didn't get a Merrimack certificate. Usually on bids like this, if they're Merrimack, businesses that pay Merrimack taxes or rent in Merrimack, they have to provide some form of identification, either a tax bill or a copy of their lease, to say they're a Merrimack business and put it in with their bid package. I don't believe we got that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do they get some kind of?
There is, in our, not to get too much in the weeds, but in our purchasing policy, there is, not a plus, but we look at Merrimack businesses, if the low bidder is X and Merrimack business comes in at Y, if they're within 10%, there's a caveat in our, in our purchasing policy to give the bid, to give the bid, even though they weren't the low bid, if they fall within 10% of the low bid to a Merrimack business.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Jackie. Bill, did you have anything?
No, that was, that was my only question.
Okay, great. So that construction will be starting in July. One other thing, retreat. As everybody knows, it's on the 25th of May. Items are due by the 17th, so we can get the books out. So if you have any agenda items that you'd like added, besides what was already been mentioned, please pass them along, so we can get the background and everything in the books.
I think the, so you can send me an email in the postage. I'd like to, just, the boat, the new boat ramp, if there's any discussion we might need for that.
Okay, I believe that's in from last year, but we'll just update it. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. There's no consent agenda, and there's no old business. So under new business, item number one is a consideration of library trustees' recommendation for alternate membership. And where to consider, the library board of trustees has recommended for us to appoint Janice Tibbetts to the position of alternate.
Hi.
Thank you for coming.
How you doing? I'm Rick Barnes, Chair for the Library Trustees. With me is Janet Tibbetts. We met with Janet, or Janice.
That's okay.
Janet, sorry, another trustee, Janice. We met with her. She sat in on a couple of our public meetings and expressed an interest in being one of the alternates. We interviewed her, and the trustees voted 5-0-0 to recommend asking for the Town Council to appoint her, as RSA requires the Town Council to do the appointment. So I am here presenting our request.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions, or Janice? Nope, seems like a great selection to me. I'm very happy that people want to volunteer to do it.
She met with our friends group, which is a fundraising arm of the library. She met with them, introduced herself.
I've lived here 11 years. I thought it's time for me to contribute. And I love the library, so that's what I decided to do.
It's a good group of people, so, very good.
Thank you.
They have a, as Council Troy and I have talked about in the past, you know, they have, they have a very good budget in which to do creative things. So I hope you take advantage and participate in with how the library has grown.
Yeah, it sure has.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Town Council approve, I'm assuming we approved this, correct? Am I right?
Approve the recommendations, is that how the motion should be?
Well, or appoint, I mean.
Yeah, we approve the appointment, that's it, though, okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Town Council approve the Merrimack Library Board of Trustees' appointment of Janice Tibbetts to the position of alternate trustee pursuant to whatever RSA or charters are.
RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15.
Thank you.
Motion by Council Boyd.
Sorry, wrong one. Hold on, sorry. 30, 30, -E, and Charter Article 8-15, sorry.
Thank you, Paul. A motion by Council Boyd, seconded by Tom Koenig. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. 6-0-0. Congratulations.
Thank you.
She'll, she'll have to be sworn in as well.
Oh, yeah, I do, yes. We do that right now.
Oh, okay.
Let me see.
Oh, you're welcome.
What I'd like you to do is if you could, down here, if you could raise your right hand and read this one.
Okay. Hopefully, I can do without my reading glasses.
Or I could read it to you.
Oh, no, 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 it's okay. So I just, I, Janice Tibbetts, do I have to raise my hand?
Yes.
Okay. I, Janice Tibbetts, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as an alternate member of the Library Board of Trustees, according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire. So help me God. Thank you.
Is there a need for the ethics packet on this?
I actually have it.
Oh, okay.
Because I sent you that, I think. We have like lots of documents. One of them was ethics.
No.
Okay. Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you all. And just FYI, we're definitely looking forward to the Fourth of July. We've already started talking about it on the trustees, what we're going to do from the library point of view. So we're looking forward to that.
And that's a good venue, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
People go. But thank you so much again. I fight them all the time, but, okay, next item on the agenda is acceptance, the Town Council's to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation of $600 from the Merrimack Lions Club to the Parks and Recreation Department to be used for two movie nights in the park pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. And Paul, did you want to speak to that for Matthew, or is it, do you want me to just?
I, it's pretty, it's, it's just like last year. We had three, I believe last year, we had three movie nights. This year, the Lions Club has offered to sponsor two of those movie nights. The movies are still being talked about, what movies, but they will be family-appropriate movies for the park.
Perfect, and it's worked out nicely. A lot of people seem to attend.
A lot of people have attended.
It's just a great idea.
Peter?
Paul, that's at Watson. They do this at Watson Park?
Yeah.
Yep, they do, the small, the two that they did last year, they did at Watson. The one they had to do at Watson Park was in association with a radio station, so they wanted a bigger venue, because they figured more people would be, they were advertising it also.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Town Council accept and expend a donation of $600 from the Merrimack Lions Club to the Parks and Recreation Department to be used for two movie nights in the park pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. And furthermore, that the Town Manager and/or, and her, and/or her proxy be authorized to sign any paperwork necessary to perfect the transaction.
Motion by Council Boyd, seconded by Pete Albert. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. 6-0-0. And item number three, under new business, a third quarter financial review. Finance Director Paul McCally will review the key financial information of the quarter ending March 31, 2017.
Thank you, thank you once again, Mr. Chairman.
Give me a second while my computer boots up.
It's warming up. I'd like to first state that, as I looked at the, through the third quarter of March 31st, 2017, for fiscal year '16, '17, we have significant appropriations to meet our goals and needs for this year. And our revenues are coming in a little bit ahead of schedule for both our, as you'll see, in our auto and our interest. Interest has really ticked up in the last, really, 30 days, 60 days. It's really going higher. And it's funny to say, we were at a conference, I was at a conference last week with the interest. And I wanted to bring all the banks in the room, because I wanted to start, you know, a bidding war. Because somebody was talking about .75, another guy was talking about .82, another one was talking about .92, and everybody, all the finance people, were getting excited, because we haven't seen rates like this since 2008, 2009. So it's been a long time coming, but interest is finally ticking up, so.
In their entertainment, yeah.
Yeah, right, exactly. Health insurance comparison, we, you know, we've been looking at health insurance over the years, and that's one of our, you know, $2 million expenditure for the health insurance of, just for the general fund itself, which includes police, fire, DPW, a tax collector, solid waste, the people at the transfer station, finance, assessing the Town Manager's office. And right now, we're through three quarters, we spent $1.9 million. The year before that, we spent $2.3 million. We made a change to the health plans of every, basically, everybody but the Police Officers Union at the time. Since with their new contract, they'll be making the change to a deductible plan. And you can actually see that we have this, we budgeted for this and the budgets for the savings, and we're actually getting the savings through what we're paying out, about $400,000 difference over the same period of time.
This just, part of our ability to reach this number, which is lowest in, from what I'm seeing since 2009, is also through the work of yourself, the town, and our collective bargaining units, correct? They've all worked together for this?
Yes, the Town Manager negotiated contracts with the deductible plan and the Town Council to give her the wherewithal to be able to go out there and negotiate these contracts. So, yes.
Great, thanks.
New Hampshire retirement, it's pretty flat, as you Um, New Hampshire retirement, it's pretty flat, as you'll see, for Group One, which is DPW, Town Clerk, Tax Collector, Assessing, General Government, which is the, the town manager, Community Development, Highway Guys. Fire, there's a spike, and you'll see that in the next slide, why there's a spike in their retirement cost. And police, there's a little bit of spike in their retirement cost over the same period of last year. The reason for police is that in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, at the beginning of the year, we were dealing with some vacancies and things of that sort. So on a cumulative total, it was a little bit loader, but lower. But now that they're, they were almost one hundred percent staffed up, it was a little bit higher in, in the retirement cost. But we, we budgeted for that, and they're well within their budget for New Hampshire retirement. Overtime costs. The big overtime jump, as you'll see, is in the fire department. There is been, as we talked about in the budget process, and when we talked about needing the four additional firefighters, is that there's been a lot of claims, worker comp claims, a lot of short-term disability claims. So to backfill those positions, you got to backfill them with overtime, and that's why their overtime has spiked. And you'll see the highway department has a little bit of a spike from, from last year. And that's because last year's winter was very mild and, and not a lot of snow. And as we, we heard earlier tonight by Eversource, we had two or three major storms in the month of March, right up to April Fool. So that's why their overtime's a little bit higher. But once again, looking at the overall budget that we did budget for, we're, we're in good shape. We're, we're right around what we budgeted for highway departments' overtime to pave the roads. What I like to do next is I like to really break that down because of the fire department kind of skews the numbers a lot, and you really can't see them. So I wanted to just show you on a, on a base by base. And once again, like I talked about, the high, you can really see the, the highway equipment, highway overtime went back to like a two thousand fourteen, fifteen overtime, what we had for overtime, which is about the same number of storms that we had as last, as this past winter. Solid Waste is saying pretty consistent. Communications, there's been a little bit of a jump in, in overtime. That should level out now that they are now fully staffed also. And the police department has come down a little bit in their overtime numbers, but well within their budget.
Any particular reason why the, the police budget went down? That could be explained in general?
I, I think the reason why the police department came down a little bit was because of the way we factored overtime. I mean, not, not, not the way we factored overtime, of course we're talking about overtime. The way we factored the holiday pay for overtime. When the guys, when the, there, there are so many hours that they're working that is included in, in a separate bucket in their accounts. Every, everything's broken out by account. So there's a separate account for the general police officers. And there's an overtime account for them. So when the gentlemen are, are getting paid that overtime, we were dumping every, well, when they're getting paid that holiday, we're dumping everything into overtime years past. Now we're straining that out a little bit to, to make it where it is in the budget. And that's why the dip is a little bit, but well within their budget still.
Well, for, for outside details that the police department has, is that, does that show up as overtime in here, or is that?
No, that's a, that's a separate account. I don't, I don't include that. That's something I can do in the future, start including where they are with the, the outside details.
But is it paid as an hourly, it's paid as an hourly piece in overtime, though?
It's paid as an hourly, but it's paid in a separate bucket or a separate account. So, and it's one hundred percent paid for by the outside vendors.
Right.
Yeah.
No, okay.
And I, just to follow up on that, and I think sometimes in having worked in the police department, I think that a lot of folks think that the officers work in the details. It comes right out of the overtime, the budgeted overtime, and it's a separate outside detail paid by those folks who, who pay to have, who have the officers there. So it's paid by another source. I think that's always important to bring up.
And for the point, you know, we, we heard from Eversource earlier tonight, and they were talking about how aggressive they've been with tree cutting and everything. Eversource and Ashland's Tree had, uses the police outside detail, and they pay for those details.
Right.
So, you know.
I knew that, I just didn't know if it.
But it comes out of a separate bucket. I keep that separately.
And, and I, quite honestly, I also wasn't sure if, if it was just paid at a flat rate hourly, because I know in, I'm pretty sure that in Milford, they, they get paid, they are same hourly for a detail as any, anybody fills that position. It's not like if, if you're a captain doing it versus a first-year patrolman.
In our, in our police department, in our union, we don't cap. So it's whatever your hourly rate is.
Yeah, no, and I, I just, that's why I wasn't sure if it showed up in here.
Yeah, so it's, it's separate. And I can, I can include that in, in a, you know, that's not that difficult to go back and get all that information over the years, so you can see it. And once again, breaking down a little bit further, general government and other departments, so that you can really see what's going on. It's, it's been pretty flatlined. Other departments are, departments like Building and Grounds, Community Development, Tax Collector, those are the other departments, and it's pretty much a flatline over year to year with the overtime. And ITs and general government as well. I, I like to look at this once a year, usually in March, gives me an idea, well, we're basically through the winter, and gives me idea how we're doing with electricity. Because we can say we're, we're expending X amount of dollars in electricity, and it doesn't really show you the whole picture. It's the kilowatts, it's your usage. That it's whether or not you're really, to drive down your costs per electricity is, is your kilowatt usage. We have some great contracts that we've negotiated, you know, for, for kilowatt per, per kilowatt hour, which has really driven down some of our costs. But what I like to do is I like to look at this and say, okay, where do we stand? Where do we stand such as, you know, fire department's got an uptick in electricity, why is that? And we go and start looking at some of this stuff, the streetlights, we've taken on a couple more developments, which is the last column on, on the chart on the screen. And, and solid waste has, has an uptick. We should actually start seeing some reduction next year because of some of the electrical upgrades we did. We did some electrical upgrades at solid waste. So next year, I, I would assume when we look at this chart again, that kilowatt usage should be down. The same thing when we look at streetlights, which, that, that should be down, the kilowatt that we use. So that's what we look at when, when we're looking at kilowatts to see, is there areas where we can target and talk to about electric consumption or, or more efficient lighting because of, of the usage that they do have. So this is what we, I use this chart for, is to look at things of that sort. And the same thing with natural gas.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the streetlights start showing up in this quarter, though?
We just finished the project one hundred percent. So it will actually start showing up April first forward.
Okay.
With it, because once they signed off, Eversource will now change what they're billing us the kilowatt, what they're billing us at. And then it should start coming down. Our vendor had to send a, a report into Eversource, and they have done that, from, from what I have understood, is they have done that. So now we'll start seeing those kilowatt hours start coming down.
Okay, because I thought it would naturally do that, because the LEDs use much less power.
They do, but on the streetlights, they're not on a meter. So they're not metered.
Oh, so we get just a, I get.
You get a flat rate of, this is, the lights on from eight o'clock at night to eight o'clock in the morning. PSNH, Eversource, sorry, does a calculation, and they say, this is how many kilowatts you use. And that's why with the, with the new LED lights, we had to tell them what wattage was in the fixtures, so they can do that calculation and figure out how much they're using. So starting, if we looked at this again in June, hopefully it starts, the, the kilowatts start coming down, which in fact then takes our dollar amounts down, and we'll start saving money.
Perfect, thank you.
And a little plug there for that. We, I'm pretty sure, I know we're one hundred percent complete on the streetlights. And I think we're ninety-nine point nine-nine percent done on all the other smaller, I think the last piece that we have is Watson Park, to finish off Watson Park. But I believe we're almost one hundred percent complete with that project. Kyle has a meeting with Eversource next week, the gentleman who handles the rebate. And hopefully we'll sign the paperwork and get the check in before June thirtieth. So, yeah. Same thing with natural gas, we look at natural gas. This winter, like I said, it was a little bit colder than last winter. As a matter of fact, the heats are still on because we can't get a day where it's above sixty degrees lately. So the heats in some of the buildings are still on while other areas of the building are air conditioned. It's one of those funky times of year where if the sun hits you right, you're warm. If the sun doesn't hit you right, right, your office is cold. But what I do here is, last year was a mild winter. I'll go back and look at the purple, which is the two thousand fourteen, fifteen year, where we had a lot of spikes in natural gas, which was a very cold and snowy winter. We're underneath that, so we're still doing good. And when I go out to do our natural gas contract, I'll look at, I'll, this is one of the charts that I'll look at, so that we get the best pricing possible for our natural gas usage. Now revenues, the good source. Auto registrations are coming in higher than two thousand fifteen, sixteen. And I'm projecting about a five hundred thousand dollar increase in, in, over, over budget. We're going to be almost at five million. Yeah, I, if we, if we hit the same, if we do the same for April through June that we did last year, just the same, no, no better, we'll be almost at around four point nine million dollars. So auto registrations are coming in. Today I saw, you know, four or five luxury cars in the, in the town hall getting new plates. So people are still buying them. Case in point, my buddy had a two thousand fifteen pickup truck. The dealership was hounding him for his two thousand fifteen pickup truck because they need used vehicles on the lot. They put him in a, a pickup truck, the next brand, next model up from him, at the same cost as what he paid in two thousand fifteen. And they gave him a significant amount of money, more than what he paid for the truck in fifteen, they gave to him in a trade. So they're, they're, they want, the dealerships are looking for these trucks and looking for these luxury vehicles, and, and they're turning them around with, with them, with the used vehicle market. So it's something that we, we definitely need to keep looking at. One of, I, with the, it's very been hard because the interest rates, like you'll see on the next slide, have been two thousand eight, nine, we finally came back to the two thousand nine, ten. Almost seven years have gone by, and we're finally back to where we were. So when you look at that, you also got to look at the cars, because that means interest rates are coming up. Now money's not cheap to borrow, so to speak, for car loans and things. You're not getting the zero percent deals, you're not getting the, the point nine financing right now. So we have, we have to look at these two in conjunction with one another when we look at the MS four in, in September, when we try to, when we go ahead with our revenue projections for next fiscal year.
I just want to make a comment. It's six years in a row that it's, it increased from the previous year. I mean, it's, it's a six-year run. It's, it's unbelievable. And as much as we keep trying to project a little bit higher, we're always off. I mean, and we raised it from Tom, Tom Kay last year to even go up, right?
Yeah, we want, we want up to four point four million dollars, and we're still going to be, it was three point nine the year before that, we went up to four point four.
Right.
And now we're going up, now, now I'm projecting about four nine.
When it turns, it turns quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. And, and, you know, when I first started the job, way back when, thirteen years ago, we had a very, a very aggressive auto registration. And it fell. And we, we fell hard. We were, we were two, three hundred thousand dollars underneath that number. And, you know, so we want to be as aggressive as possible, but also using a lot of caution when, when we make these projections, because we're only, when I make a projection for revenues and things of this sort, when we come forward, when we talk about in September on the MS four, which is the revenue report we have to state, send up to the state for the tax rate setting in, for December two thousand seventeen, we're only three months into our year. So I was talking to the auditor, and he says, he said to me last week, you know, you're, we've always looked at this, and we've always seen a big, you know, variance there. I said, we're not like other towns you audit. Other towns you audit have nine months of data. They're only projecting the last three months of their fiscal year. I'm projecting nine months of my fiscal year in revenues. And anything can happen in those nine months of my fiscal year, you know? And it has happened versus people who have nine. So there's a little bit of cautious optimism, but we have to be, you know, we have to look at it. And if, if we do do five million dollars, you know, if we, we do estimate five million dollars next year, and it comes at four point four million, we got to find six hundred thousand dollars someplace. And when this is the second largest revenue that we get is our auto registration, our taxes are number one, our auto registrations are number two, it's a lot of small accounts that we have to pick up to try to make up this six hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, it isn't a magic wand when we say, okay, we're going to get more in XYZ lighting. It, it, this is, it's not, our third largest is not even close to this. So that's why we've got to be kind of cautiously optimistic when, when we do do these projections. And.
Jackie?
I have an elementary question for you. If we underestimated it every year, partly on purpose, in some years it'd be accurate, what are the ramifications of that?
The only ramification for underestimating the, the revenue, the auto registration revenue, is that for every thirty thousand dollars you underestimated, it's a penny on the, it could be up to a penny on the tax rate. But the money doesn't go away. If we have extra revenue there, it falls back into the fund balance. And the council has been very proactive. Last year, they gave money five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars back. This year, there was three hundred thousand dollars when we were talking about the budget that, that the council was thinking of giving back. So they are giving money back to the citizens of Merrimack, and, and that's where it would fall out through. It'd fall out through your fund balance and, and your unreserved fund balance that if you're over your revenues and you're under your expenditures, it's like a profit and loss statement. Whatever you have for your, and, you know, whatever you have for the bottom line goes into fund balance, and then the council, the council has been, has, has a plan to give that money back over years or, you know, things of that sort. So it does trickle back to the citizens of Merrimack. And I just wanted to show, this is the slide that we were talking about a little bit with, you know, you talked about, you know, your seven years, your seven years in a row of auto registrations increasing. Look at my interest for the seven years before this. The interest was either flatlined or down. So now the interest is coming back, and this is a slippery slope that we were talking about. Interest is coming back. I would hope, you know, on a sees, if you're looking at a seesaw and you've got interest in auto registrations, with interest going up, I would hope to see that the, the, the auto registrations balance that out. So the auto registrations are up here, interest is down there, as this comes this way. And a teeter totter, they're, they're hopefully teetering in the middle someplace when, when they come up and down. And then building permits, which is a good sign. We heard from the, the planning board, you know, to, one, one lot, one residential lot, and then it's coming up again. And this is part of it. People are adding on to their homes, they're, they're building new homes. Industry is looking at things, businesses are building. We're a little bit under what we were last year, but we, we are still getting, it's springtime, and, and people are starting to bring their, those permits in, and their building permits in. So I'd see that we are going to, you know, subs, you know, be over what we projected for building permits.
And that's, does anybody have any questions? Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, in your memo in the packet, you alluded to that you were watching the welfare department. Could you elaborate a little bit about that, please?
Yeah. The last, we, we had a couple situations where our welfare department had to step in and help a couple of residents out in, in paying some very large bills. And we were doing very well in the welfare department. And by paying those, I think it was like, in one week, I paid out thirteen thousand dollars for welfare. So it, we had, just have to keep an eye on her to see, the department, not her, but an eye on the department to make sure how they, how they end up. One thing about welfare is that I can't say, okay, Pat, you're done. No more spending. You can't, you can't, I can't do that. We can't, I can't do that. The council can't do that. It's RSA saying that if somebody's in need, you need to help them. So we have to just keep an eye out to make sure that if we need to move money in from another, another department, we'll, we'll have to bring it to the council's attention and, and move that money in.
Peter, and then Bill.
Paul, just.
Did you have, I'm sorry, Peter, did you have something to follow up on?
Here's the follow up.
Sorry.
I apologize.
that we've had with welfare have been, I don't wanna say small dollar amounts, but they've been specific things that have come up that were, never rose to the level of $13,000. And I was wondering, is the decision that was made to, for those specific bills, was that a?
That was a council decision.
Okay, when did we make that decision?
I, I can't go into details because of specific individuals and we're, we're not allowed to talk, but it, it all had to do with Diane's office.
Okay.
Peter?
I have to draw.
You have a set?
Yeah.
Um, do I, as far as our welfare budget is, is my concern unfounded over these new long extended state places? Or is that something we should be contemplating as they receive occupancy permits?
That could have an effect. It's just like, um, it would just be like when, um, Flatley up the road, when he has his 550 apartments come online, um, that would be a concern too. Because if they need help with rents and things of that sort, they, if they go to Pat, and there's a need there, the welfare, if they go to welfare and there's a need there by her calculations, then we're gonna have to pay. So we have, we have to keep that in mind too, going forward.
Okay, thank you.
So, just one last follow up, Paul. When I'm looking at your expenditure report as of March 31st, 2017, showing a current balance of $35,625.74, of what percentage remaining of that is the welfare department manager's salary?
It's a part-time position.
It's a part-time position.
I understand that. Percentage wise, if that makes it easier for you, Paul?
6%.
Okay.
Okay. And I wanna dovetail off of, uh, Vice Chairman Rothaus' comment regarding the new proposed, you know, developments coming in like an ext, like, like the extended, I think it's, uh, Wood Springs, I think is what it's, the, the project being built off of Executive Park Drive. I agree with you, I think it's something that the council, um, is gonna have to take into consideration.
Yeah.
In the upcoming budget. How we do that is, is a difference, how we get there is a different story, but-
And it's not just that, that's the new one opening up. There's been some like, on DW Highway that have changed over-
Right.
To extended stay also.
The old residence and which is now something different?
Right. And, no. You know, that's, that's a extended stay also in some of those places, so, and London Court. So.
Okay.
You know, it's just, we gotta-
Sounds like a retreat subject.
It's definitely a retreat subject.
I just remember when the Merrimack Hotel closed, um, our, that, that budget went down a fair amount. And so I didn't know, now conversely will come in. So, all right, I just, we definitely have to keep that, that in our minds as time goes on. All right, is there any other, any further questions? Paul?
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Next on the agenda's minutes for April 27th.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Thursday, April 27th, 2017 Town Council meeting minutes with the following proposed changes.
Go, yes.
On page- six, between lines four and five, could we add a space there? It's more style over substance.
Okay.
Yep. Moving forward on page eight, line 10, this is just me, is, is it possible that we could put, after the word Cambridge, that we put Mass in parentheses so that we're talking specifically about Cambridge, Mass, not Cambridge, Michigan, Cambridge, England, any other place where there's a Cambridge?
Actually, by leaving it the way it is, Cambridge would not necessarily be offended. They might assume it was from anyone.
That's true. It's true too. On page nine, line 34, after the number seven, there are two apostrophes. Is that supposed to mean inches?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, okay. Okay, fair enough. On page 10, between lines six and seven, just to add spacing. And on page 11, to satiate the Strunk and White component of my mind, lines one through 13, is it possible to replace the semicolon with a colon? It drives me nuts. I'm sorry, it drives me nuts. And I knew you were gonna react to that, Council Dwyer.
I need that in, I, I want that for the record. Bill Boyd needs some help, some serious, serious help.
Oh, Councilor Boyd, I have to say, proper usage. If you're writing, uh, if you're writing a paragraph anyway, and you use a comma, when you come to another place where there might be a comma, it's a colon, a semicolon.
Fine, I'll drop it.
And there is a comma, I found it. Planning board comma alternate.
I'll drop it.
Would you believe I went to school for this?
And Bill must not have, because he-
No, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, planning board alternate, but that's separating planning board comma alternate position.
And then-
That's how I interpreted that.
Right. Well, it doesn't matter.
Moving on. Page 12, line 20, can we capitalize tournament? I suppose the lowercase t? That's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I have one.
Jackie?
I apologize. It is. It's really weird, a weird one, on page one. It's supposed to be a quote from, uh, from a letter, and it's on page 23, or, uh, line 23. It's supposed to be evidently no remnants of former usage, remnants, but I looked it up and it's a word, remnant. And you wouldn't want to have that on town property, remnant.
Jackie, we'll double check the letter. I believe she copied and pasted from the letter that we received. So let me double check that.
Yeah, yeah, she might have, she might have, because that is a weird, it's a weird, it would, to tell you the truth, I thought that it might cause, um, confusion.
Let me, let me double check that, but I believe she copied that directly from that letter.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna wait for that to be clarified by Paul. Uh, Tom.
On page seven, line 21, it's, it says, Councilor Koenig commented that has financial tags tied to it. And I just wanted to insert after that, uh, that a state takeover of the MS4 permitting has financial tags tied to it.
Good clarity.
Yeah, no, I agree, good clarity.
State takeover.
A state takeover of the MS4 permitting.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Dan, do you have any changes?
No.
Okay.
Just a, how about a comment?
No.
You made one already.
You already did, yes.
I have seen laughter over in that area tonight.
It's because Eileen's not there to control it, that's what it is.
It, it could be worse, Council Dwyer could be going full Trump and tweeting it out. Bill Boyd needs help, you know?
All right.
You're lucky I don't tweet.
Maybe you should take it off.
No. It'd be my downfall.
All right, is there a second to the motion by Councilor Boyd with changes that were mentioned?
Second.
Second by Dan Dwyer.
And further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Six zero zero. Comments from the press? No one is here? Comments from the public? No one is here? Comments from the council? Council Boyd? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And I'm sure all of us received in the mail yesterday, a hand-drawn invitation from a child at the Reed's Ferry School, uh, announcing, and it, okay, well, you're going to get a card in the mail, Tom. Hand-drawn, actually pretty cool, announcing the Reed's Ferry Art Show and Ice Cream Social on May 18th, Thursday, May 18th, from 5:15 to 7:30. And, uh, my invitation was signed by Savannah, and I just wanna say, thank you Savannah, did a great job. And, uh, I certainly will be there with my daughter. And, uh, I hope my council colleagues, um, make an attempt to go and, um, check out some of the artwork that, uh, some of the kids in our community are doing. I would encourage people in our community to go out and, uh, support the kids at Reed's Ferry. So, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. Here.
I know the MIA parade got canceled. Is it for this Friday? Did it get rescheduled?
I don't, I haven't heard anything about the parade.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was gonna be-
Somebody doesn't have a mic.
I'm sorry, I, I have not heard anything. I will double check tomorrow, and if there is a parade tomorrow night, I will make sure that the police put out an Xcel and that, I believe the sign is still at Watson Park, so we'll have that flashing.